Six forty-five, I'm going to call this Pension Board meeting to order for August fourteenth, and ask for roll call.
Art Gannon.
Kevin Cunningham.
Dean Corby.
And, or Scott. We do have a call, so we can proceed. Item C, approval of special pension board meeting dated June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three. The Chancellor filled over.
Make motion to approve the meeting minutes for June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Motion's been made by Art, second, by Dean. Any other discussion? Are you not all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And we have one for new business. Consider an act on a retirement request by Laura Fitch. And Laura had worked in the Board of Education for many years, so... Paid a higher October fourth, two thousand and one. So just so you know, if, as you read through the documentation, if you do approve, what she's looking for is a monthly retirement benefit payable as of July first, twenty-twenty-three, so that's one month back. We would be looking for the hundred percent contingent and unitance option, which would be four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and one cent.
Per month.
Per month.
I'll make a motion to act on the pension distributions for Laura Fitch for four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and one cent per month, starting one July twenty-three.
Second.
Art's made a motion, Dean has seconded. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We go with the business, I'm going to take, take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Dean, Art, at six... Forty-seven. Thank you. Oh yeah, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Six forty-seven. Seven PM, I'm going to call this Board of Selecting meeting to order for August fourteenth, and ask that you please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
My Pledge of Legions is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, so roll call?
Art Gannon.
I'm slowing down the roll call because, no. Kevin Cunningham. And, you have not seen Scott here. We will go to item C to approve meeting minutes for Board Selecting meeting from seven twenty-four, twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes for seven twenty-four, twenty-three.
And I will second. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Item D, which is public comment, this could be the time to have anybody in the public come forward to have a public comment, just done. Okay. Very numb, we go to old business of which we have none, and then into item F for new business. Item one is to consider an act on tax refund as repressed by the tax collector. The total should say two hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-six cents. I'll read through them. It's Heidi Repression for ten dollars and eighty-seven cents. Reapalem for twenty-four seventy. Jennifer Warren, Warren, for eighty-five seventy-seven. Anthony Jim Quiddy for fifty-seven fifty. Tracy Villas for thirty-nine seventy-one. And this is for Jake and Teresa Russo for twelve dollars and eighty-one cents. Grand total is two hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-six cents.
Make a motion to act on the tax refunds in amount two hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-six cents.
And I will second that. Any other discussion? Are you not all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Item two, to discuss an act on approving orders one thirty-seven, the actual application form. I'm very anxious, I'm through the process of putting an application form together, we reviewed it, and minor modification to item A. And that would be for the, just for cleaning up something there, or street address for a property location to a two-minor, and also put his own number. So, that is the only modification for orders one thirty-seven application for the orders. If you have a chance to read through.
Make a motion to approve the orders one thirty-seven application form as written.
I will second. Any other discussion? Are you not all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, item three, discussion, discussing action items on Charter Revision Commission. We have majority of people who are on Charter Revision here tonight, so I want to go through with what we had. And I will pass out the actual agenda for tonight, and also what we have for possible review for the charter. I did have a few things on here, and I know Art will probably think of roll calls also. Did you have anything written down for them, or you have?
Oh, no, no.
Okay. Well, we can go through it at least, when we start this up, actually document that and put it into writing for you. For the ones I had, why don't you, why don't you go first?
Well, some of mine.
Okay.
In addition to yours.
All right. So obviously, the, one of the biggest things we have to do is work on fixing the charter so that when we have an annual town budget, or record for the town budget, we have to, so if the Board of Education passes and the town budget fails, that we don't have to go back and redress the Board of Education one. So, that's one of the items. I have some suggested language for that already, and we're reviewing this with the attorney, and that's one of them. I have a second one, which is a bit better clarification for modifying section five-six, and then all this is here to read through for section five-six, any three, to give a better definition for what WPTCA is. And there's a kind of general statute which shows you that. And that would be, one way to say, okay, well, what is WPTCA? You can refer to the general statutes, and that would be a way to go. Another suggestion is, either not, we don't have anything in our current book or ordinance which talks about what a pension board is. Nothing. So it might be good to actually give definition to what a pension board is. And whether it's a suggestion from making a change to the charter, or actually putting an interwriting in an ordinance board, that's fine, just want to get it, so we start talking about it.
It's things for yours, I mean, no sign of it.
Got it. Do you have, as I go through this?
Yeah, the WPTCA, number two, so I think that number one was that makes a pension board.
But while we're talking about it in the charter, it's easier to say referencing of the charter, that's what it says. So I'm fine with whatever comes forward, but...
Just, that one is nothing in the charter yet.
Yeah.
They want to add to that, is the flood erosion control order? Which is the Board Selecting, that's orders number forty-three. That's fine.
I'm referencing the charter, I don't know. And yeah, we have to go through with the charter review of this, because it is feasible. I had a question on the definition of legislative body. Legislative body is the authority of the town meeting, however, the Board Selecting is the legislative body for Board Selecting meetings. So there's a proper definition listed there. The other I had is section two-five-five. It's very difficult sometimes when you think about the way that the world has progressed. I'll give you the example of two-five-five. Two-five-five says that when you have the summary text of an ordinance that you enact, that's being a newspaper with a ten-day period. Well, you try getting something into a newspaper nowadays, so it goes in the next day. It won't happen, it's the local circulations. They tell you when the next date is available to put it into the newspaper. So you could be outside of that boundary of ten days. So, we're looking at this as a possible, twenty or thirty days as a possibility. And that way, it gives you a little bit of way to run it. It's still enacting it, but it makes it so it's easier to go through the process to get a newspaper. The next one, you have anything on that one? Oh, okay. The other one I had was clarification of ten-six-C as expenditures upon counting. I think it was pretty clear where we have a resident who didn't see it that way. So, it says in section C, no officer or agency of the town shall spend or enter into any contract which would oblige the town to expend in excess of appropriate, approved appropriations. Any officer who, without authority from the charter, expands or causes to be expended any money of the town's excepted payment in the fine judgment surrendering as a town, shall be liable in civil action in any manner. So, review of this with the town attorney, I thought everything was fine, but I still want that clarification. So if anybody's asking a question about it, you should have written writing that it's on.
You don't know what I mean on that?
Yep.
It's all depends on what approved appropriations.
Right, and we have at the end of the year, just so you can, a little better understand. Towards the end, we tried to go quarterly with Board Finance, if it comes up, we would talk about line of transfers. So as an example would be, if we know we're going over illegal because of things that have happened throughout the year which are out of our control, we go to the Board Finance and say, these are the things we're able to transfer from and put it into that part of budget. So those things are allowed, and like, end of the year, usually that's something that happens. We're sure it's done appropriately.
Are you going to move on?
Yep.
And on two-four-C?
Yep.
With changing that. Well, and this, there's one question I had on two-four-C.
Yep.
Is that, it says, the budget can be approved separately.
Right, according to the...
Appropriations, we should be shallow.
I would also ask that the Charter Revision Commission think about, and I wouldn't have the problems, by the way, eliminating requirement of the third question, which is your hypercapital budget. It's something that happens, it has, has meaning, but it has meaning for apply for grants. But it's something that we shouldn't really totally rely on if it passed for both, or if you pass it, or a bit budget, if you pass the town budget, but that will fail us. Calling your budget process because of hypercapital budget.
Okay, so you're going to suggest taking that out?
That's what I would suggest.
All right. Because if you don't, that was my next thing, is two-four-A, like two...
Two, sorry, yeah, I have, yeah. Um, we also talk about something which is in your package, and I'll pass it to you, which talks about the elected town, in chapter four, elected town officers. It states there with the town clerk. In a town, there shall be a town clerk who has, shall be elected for a term of four years. It's not so much that as an issue, as the issue of how long, as the start date, end date. We have the town clerk here, we can definitely answer your questions tonight, but there's an issue concerning the start date, which should be the first January. You then can finish off all of your business of the town, the elections. If any questions that came through, let's say in November, you put some questions in for Charter Revision, if it's done properly, sent to the state. So this, there's an actual state statute that shows that, and I think it should be included in following the state statute. And then there was one other resident who sent me a rather long text message. And asked multiple questions. They're registered as a simple voter, they, they'd like to be able to vote on everything, including the town budget. Problem is, a town budget, if we have a mill rate that stays the same, or it goes down, like we just had, you would go to a town meeting. You could possibly put out the ballot ahead of time, in a printed format, that person couldn't get that ballot. But if you go to the town budget meeting, and someone says, hand vote, that negates the paperwork. So it's a very difficult situation. I do understand where they're coming from. Look, in the eventual world of reality later on, you're looking at doing streaming meetings, and doing that by way of someone doing the online, great share voters will be online, which is a great people trying to come along into a meeting, making sure that they have their ID, putting it into a waiting, and then they actually be able to, be able to vote that way. That's, that's always the way.
You only have to repeat the changes to do background for everybody.
You could do that. But again, you're... But that's a, that's a costly factor, honestly. This person also wanted to, you have this in your, you can get that, this. This person also went on to ask a couple of other things, like, because they're elderly, and they'd like to be able to make so that the, at a certain age, that the taxes are increased. And I tried to explain to the person that may be okay for someone who's elderly, but the problem is, where does that tax burden then shift onto? Because if your, if your property value is stayed a certain dollar, that's all you're going to have, any increase from that would then shift onto somebody else, versus town businesses. It's, it's a difficult thing, but I just, I included it in your, your package, so you can see it. Those are the ones I think I have. Do you have others?
There's one, definitely, at the back page.
Yeah, it says, it's a typo, we can fix it, unintentional, unintentional left flank.
Chapter seven.
Yeah.
I may make you, you can help me with this right here. Chapter seven, section seven-one. That's appointment of persons to your boards, your commissions.
Yeah, I think we talked about that.
And in seven-seven, the point, is that appointing a board itself?
Members. Oh, you both, actually both.
Was it?
Yeah. You can come on with ad hoc committees during the year, or something before, for those ad hocks.
Right, right. But is that what that point is?
Well, to clarify, you could say both individuals are...
And, and the other, well, beyond, beyond what we said, Conservation Commission is not in chapter seven.
And you don't have any...
It's your pension. Also, in terms of office, seven-five-C, ran into this, we kind of filled positions on Conservation Commission because they had to be, either or, we had to do the charities. I don't know if anything could be done with that, maybe at the, at...
Expired term. Most of the stuff, hey, like, we can do, we're just verifying the attorney, there's no space to add, she just, she can't.
Oh, there's one in the budget. Because when our budget fails, we first, we first go to making cuts, and then go to public hearing. Why is it, why don't they go to public hearing first, to hear the public, and then make the cuts?
Like, it's like that. And you've got all the two-way window.
Okay.
So...
Ten days.
Yeah, you have to have legal notice, you have to have it put out there, you have to have it on a ballot, so that if we're ready to go. Obviously, there's changes that could be made, Board Finance can say, you know what, you made too much, you made too little, whatever. If we take direction from that, then we'll have a small bit of a benefit.
Because I noticed that this year, okay, we just made cuts, and then we have a public hearing to tell them what cuts we made.
Right.
They're hearing that, really doesn't do it at that point. Hearing the public at that point, after we made cuts.
Yeah, there could be more, you could have a string of people, fifteen, a couple more. Those people have been around the town long enough, remember back in, I'm going to date myself now, nineteen twenty-two or three, they were talking about cutting the fire marshal, they were talking about cutting in the control. And that's when one of the members of Board Finance said, why don't we also cut football and education? And there were, couldn't find a seat in the standing room, and the people were outside. And they lined up, kept on coming, like, going. Remember that?
Can I add something?
Yes. Just to give the name to...
Diane Talbot, town clerk. I have been asked this year with, by both party chairs, by you, Kevin. So, a lot of people asking about minority rep within the Board of Ed, because it doesn't make sense with what our charter states and what we're allowed for each party for this coming election. Speaking to the Secretary of State's Office and the Election Division at the state level, it's because there's a general statute, I don't have it with me at the moment, but our charter has to clearly state that we want to go against that general statute in order to follow our charter for minority representation. If I cannot provide that, which I cannot, we cannot go by what our charter states for minority rep when it involves the Board of Education, it specifically has to do with that general statute. So we have to follow a general statute when it comes to minority rep with Board of Ed. So clarification on that, and if anyone wants to, but we can write it up in our charter and change that if we want to, to move forward with that.
That's a good point, because we are a town charter, we can make modifications.
And she did tell me that, but it specifically has to state that in our charter, and ours does not.
And each of these items has to be reviewed by the attorney, make sure there's no conflicting general sanctions.
And I do have the statute that we have, it's, it's in my office, but I can pull that up if the Charter Revision Commission wants to see that statute, that needs to be worked on a little bit.
We have six members here tonight for that board, and a seventh member is away on vacation, will return. There is, there is time, yeah, just finished by saying, the Charter Revision has time to make modifications. And if I give you that suggested calendar, you'll see that what we do, what we're looking to do is that by the end of March, be able to come up with something that actually allows for a special town vote on these. And that would help us with the revision. We have to also check how long it takes for them to be moved and done, and approved by the state to dedicate, so that we actually have it done well before the budget season, so that we can move forward.
I got a question for you. Minority representation for DOE is different than all the elected boards?
Correct.
It is, okay. What is it?
I'd have to go back in there, and do you remember? When we were doing that list of offices?
Is this...
I can't remember offhand what that was. I would say that we can have, we have time to come up with other things here listed, and just to write them out, and there's your time to take a look at that section. So at their next meeting, they have something.
I think I have it right on my wall, I can go grab it.
And do have copies of, I've printed suggestions on your agenda for tonight for the startup of the Charter Revision Commission. There's no action that needs to be taken on this, we're just starting off. We do have two items coming up that we'll be looking to go to the Board of Finance with. We have on item four, discuss an act on request for fifteen thousand dollars for town hall phone upgrades. If you remember, during the process of the budget, we had multiple areas that were asking for making cuts from, so we can come up with the numbers properly. We did talk to the Board Finance at that time, we're making cuts to the telephone, we take it to the police because we were needing to get to that hundred thousand, make cuts. And we were told at that time from members of the Board of Finance that if it comes down to it, we'll have the monies for it, we can come back and request monies from them, and let them discuss it. So that's exactly what we have, item number four. It's thirteen thousand, five seventy-two, seventy-six for the police portion of it. I put in here fifteen thousand, because you never know when there's something else that needs to be added. But fifteen thousand should cover the entire amount. So, we've all had documentation to the Board of Finance for their discussion on it. For Cisco system upgrades, and that's all the phones. So, I want to know what your plan there is on that one?
I'll make a motion to send a request to the Board of Finance for fifteen thousand dollars for town hall phone upgrades.
I will second that. Any other discussion? Are you not all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Item number five, discuss an act on a request for eighty thousand dollars to the state. Differentiate between the requirements and the moral issues concerning the ambulance services. Little history for the town of Plainfield, we had American Division Ambulance Service town in Plainfield for many, many years, had no cost. They were doing it on a volunteer basis. As a matter of fact, the chief at the time was getting nothing until the end of the year, when he was paid a thousand dollars, as expected, from the American Ambulances. And there were a lot of volunteers from the entire process. So what's changed over the years is the fact that you can't find volunteers. You can't find volunteers to do any of that, so what they've done is, they've put together the budget, showed you what was going on with it, to give you an idea. Normally for them to operate, it would be about a hundred thousand dollars. They do service two towns, they service Plainfield and they service Sterling. About two months ago, Sterling had discussed it and voted it down, for the twenty thousand dollars, but they didn't have the information, and I think we have in front of you here. The actual statute, I'm hoping you have it, is that paper? If you don't, I don't know if you have that. Do you have that? Yep. So the statute that we're looking at, the statute is section nineteen A, one-eighty-one B. Talks about municipalities shall establish a local emergency medical service plan. Such plan shall include the written agreements and contracts in the, between municipality and emergency medical service organizations and the public safety answering point, as defined in Connecticut General Statute twenty-two twenty-five, that covers municipality. So there's a PSA agreement that they have, it's a public service agreement with the American Division Ambulances. They've done their financials, and they are struggling. They're looking for the support from town in Plainfield. I don't think anybody would say no to them, I wanted to be sure that we have all the financials in front of us, because it's important to know how they're doing, what their plans are for the future. They're looking to, I believe it's called the transport license, and that would help them out financially, because they can get a better place for transport. Medicare, Medicaid is what they get right now, one of them just doesn't pay, really doesn't. So it's, it's very difficult for them to continue on and use this money because of that. I would anticipate that this be, not just for this year, this is a not-going thing, because the order passed our budget, putting this forward now, we have to throw our requests from us to go to the Board of Finance and General Fund, the fund analysis, take the monies and utilize it, and then put it into the budget annually after that. Hopefully, it can offset, if they were to get the transport licenses, it'll offset some of the monies, so it would be as much. We did have a meeting today, we did meet with public jets, we met with, Todd Collins is on the Board of Directors, and Kelly, and we walked through everything, and I think this must be, just have to consider it. I'll tell you, the alternatives, they're not great. Alternatives is, you have to go to another company, I couldn't think that American who's out of Norwich would be able to come and service someone if they're having physical pain, and then be able to get up here in a certain period of time, and then drive back to wherever they have to go to. So, that's out of the question. Not only that, their rates are going to go way up because they were just bought up on Hartford Healthcare. And you've got, of killing, KB, and they just had a discussion with ECO about the rates. ECO has a discounted rate right now through ECO, it's eighty-five dollars. Next year it's going to go up, twelve dollars twenty-one cent. And a year after that, another fifteen thousand, and a year after that, another fifteen thousand. So I don't feel as if they would be servicing our town, well, we'd have to have, one of those would have to have a substation here, and I don't think that would work either, I think we need to have any town service. The time call rate for the town in Plainfield on every three minutes, that's what you're looking for when you're doing stations. So I would, I would suggest, we strongly consider that this as an option, and go forward in front of the Board of Finance and request the monies. I'll do a full presentation then, a little here, and talking about the whole lineup, and any questions that the Board of Finance have, but I think this is what we need to consider at this time.
Few questions.
Well, if I can answer, I'll try.
What is section, section seven, one forty-eight?
It says, it says, suggested only, check that with the attorney, suggested only. Because if we take a look at the back page, item C? For those who are listening, item C basically talks about, um... So it basically talks about providing, the town must provide entertainment, amusement, and concerts, celebrations, that's not true. This is suggestions only, so we had, we had a long discussion on what the actual statute is, that's why you have the other page.
And in this, it says we need to have a plan.
Yep, and the plan includes having some contracts for a case in.
So why has the town never paid for this before?
That's what I talked about right at the beginning, because it was volunteer, and we never had anything. Like that, but we had actually had, yeah, did it for many, many years without having a main, with a part of the town.
And they're struggling, why? And they're struggling, why?
Because you're not getting the service, first of all, they're.
I mean, I can see some areas, contributions are down $12,000.
Yep, that's, that's minor, you're talking about, they're benefited, they're not getting the money from, if someone take, take a, use the ambulance service, right, and use American Division, they have a many, things to make, they care, and they're not getting the full amount from someone, and they're not going to go after the money. They weren't going after them before, but they're now putting up to a collection statement, so I mean, a portion of this money back.
So this is going to have to be an ongoing budget.
Absolutely.
And it's going to go up.
No, it'll, it'll probably stay the same if they get their transport license, they'll offset some of these costs.
And they don't need any help getting home.
No, no money coming ahead of time.
Not maybe five thousand.
Okay. That's what they asked for, and that's what they're, I would say, would be getting at this point. Sterling is his own issue, because I talked about that today, I said, what happens if we say okay, and Sterling says no, still? And their simple answer was, well, then we don't deserve Sterling anymore, and they have to deal with finding out their own PSA with somebody else. How would you recommend that? It's just a lot, a lot of extra money's coming through from using a company, so you're paying one for one. And the question is, are they going to have a service station in town?
So we could have TARS with them, like, good, you know, try to boost their contributions on their side?
Well, you can do that, but.
Why are they going down? Why are they losing that money?
Because people aren't paying for their bills.
And they can't afford it.
Right. Big sense of a question, that's, that they change their policy, they're now going to a collection.
Because those fees went down, and you're going to have a collection fee down.
Just, yeah, other clarification for you, there are new other towns that we can take a look in their budget, they do make payments. Killingly's this year is $150,000, they requested, was it 250? 255, so they, they did modify, so they're only going to get 150, which is increased 4,000, they were doing 910. Other towns just come over there, check around, and do make payments.
Make a motion to pass the request on to the Board of Finance for $80,000 for state required ambulance service?
I will second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Item number six, we're discussing an act on a resolution in support of a 2023 state application. Jordan, you have the floor, do you want to add anything more than we have in our package?
No, basically, this is our last opportunity to leverage the demolition costs from the annits, and actually having that pavilion, I can include the conceptual plans, same thing that we have brought to the town meeting. And at that same town meeting, it was voted on to authorize the town to use demolition costs as a right match to any state or federal program, so that's what we're doing. This would be phase one, so we're hoping that would cover the cost of actually building the pavilion itself, but I think should also cover the cost of the restrooms, in addition to any sort of, you know, early access needs, so pathways and things like that. I don't think it will cover much, any parking lot upgrades across the street, but just the way that we're writing the grant, if funding will allow, we'll be able to, you know, make strides towards actually accomplishing that goal. I just ask that you accept that resolution, which is kind of like in your package. Do you have any questions on that?
Just one.
Yeah.
Is it like the state grant for lines part where the $500,000 plus match?
Yep, so it's the same.
This was 600 something total, right?
Okay, so the total will be the demolition cost, and the total project cost for this phase would be?
Well, what would be, with the match and the grant, what would be the total?
Yep, so that would be $1,049,473. Or, I mean, if the demolition comes up, well, then it's whatever, and it's a need.
Make a motion to act on the resolution in support of the 2023 state application.
I will second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. On other, did you have a chance to look at the public act for?
I did. I did. A little bit. The only question I had is if we have a hard time getting a, that a service option now, how are we going to fill it?
Can I understand what you're saying there?
That's my only question.
I think we might want to bring this to Coffee House, ask them what their concerns are, and they'll come and support, built in there, I mean, I doubt anybody would want to get ours. All right, so we're going to do that.
And there was another thing I got to look, because it said, they want spot that had to be a veteran, and then other spots, veteran or, so, I'll go through it again. You have to talk, you know, there's two workers. But I'll make a comment.
For, or if you have other? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I will second, and the time is 7:34. Here we go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be able to follow this meeting to the right hand too, WPCA. All right, I'd like to call this Town of Plainfield Public Ocean Control Authority meetings in order, and the time is now 7:35. Roll call.
Art Gagin.
Kevin Cunningham. And no Scott. Item C, approve Minnesota WPCA meeting dated June 24th.
Make a motion to approve the WPCA meeting minutes for July 24th, 2020.
And I will second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item D, public comment for WPCA. Hearing none, there's normal business, we'll go right into new business, if you see under item one, it's a review and approve the bid opening for the Dog Track Pump Station. Those bids came in, and this is our opportunity now to review them. I did have, we had a delay, we wanted to make sure that the, our support group was able to look at it and review it and give us their anticipation, what they like to say. So you see, Fuss and Neil actually has, in Section 1, talking about what they recommend. So with that, I would just say that we take a look at their recommendation. So based on the evaluation, references checked, and summarized herein, we believe that Tucker Mechanical is the lowest responsible, yeah, lowest responsive, responsible bidder. And so in their engineering opinion, we recommend the Town of Plainfield award the Dog Track Pump Station. Replace the project to Tucker Mechanical for the base bid of the amount of $878, $878. The only thing I would say would be, we have underneath there the furnished concentrator pump, $17,110. I would ask that the motion be concluded, the entire thing, so that way it's covered. That is for $895,988. And we report Tucker Mechanical.
I make a motion to approve the bid for Tucker Mechanical Incorporated in the amount of $895,988 for the Dog Track Pump Station.
I will second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anything else on that for the agenda, motion to adjourn?
So move.
I would ask those members of the newly formed Charter Revision Commission to pop to the table and show it to our. Items, the Town of Plainfield Charter Revision Commission Special Meeting, and the agenda is for tonight, August 14th. I would just ask as our introduction for everybody who's down, everybody's made each other, we'll do a roll call, we'll start over at this end, just give us your name.
Richard Wasquins.
Lynda Stroud.
June Gagnon.
Matt Radek.
Colleen Legosis.
Christopher Longus.
Thank you all very much. All right, this is very simple, we're going to go through the election of officers, you have a suggested, in your package should be a suggested. All right, I'll be sure I get, send my office, I'll have a, that's over to you. We have a suggested calendar for the year, it is the word suggested for a reason. If I was to say to you, you go by that calendar, and there are certain days of the week you can't beat, well, there you go, it might be best for you all to vote on what you think would be appropriate. Yeah.
That was an issue, it's, it's.
Sunday listed, one, one month of dates. Okay. Confirmation, I did make a note of that. Okay. All right.
Yes, yes.
All right, here we go. So, for tonight, what we have to do is elect a chair, a vice chair, we don't need a treasurer, so it would just be a secretary. But I would ask that when you go through the process, that whoever's the secretary, you keep in notes, and that's the toughest job, really, I've got everything a little bit, kind of leaning down, and filing down all of the different suggestions. Not only will we get suggestions from the board's selectmen, but obviously, there's multiple beings from the process where you might get something from the resident, and they'll say, oh, this is probably an idea, and you wouldn't think so. This is going to be very different from normal. What I would say is, the intention here is to draft something where you can put up on ballot, whereas normally, you put it on top of the ballot for an election something. You won't have that, all you're going to have is just these questions, period. So we're also looking to, if you saw anything that I did at all, and we say 311 is really going to want to finalize this, or enter about that time. So that way, we can bring it to the town clerk, and get it posted properly, and then we can actually set a date for a, a vote on these questions.
So would the board of selectmen actually be the group determining which election the approved questions would be put to vote?
At the end of the day, would you like to work with constant what your suggestions are?
Okay, so the opinion of this commission would be considered, and what questions should we?
Yeah. I mean, obviously, like I had before, we'd like to see, because in one really is all of that money. Which is why we're really starting now, because it gives us an opportunity to sit there and go through this, and there's some holiday dates, and there are close to holiday dates, which is tough for some people, but we'll work on that. So at this time, I would entertain motions for a chair for the Charter Revision Commission.
I'd like to nominate Matt Radek.
Are there any other nominations for chair? There are no other nominations, entertain a motion to close nominations for chair?
I'll make the motion to close nominations for chair.
Second.
All in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of Matt Radek as chair, say aye.
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 Want to say something here, or would you want to stitch?
No, I can take the floor.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody, so we have the position of chair filled. Next, we will look for a motion for nomination to vice chair.
I now make the motion for chair. For vice chair.
Well, second.
A motion for Linda Stargus as vice chair has been made and seconded by June Gagnon. Seconded by June Gagnon. Any additional nominations? If not, is there a motion to close nominations for vice chair?
I'll make the nomination, I mean, a motion to close nominations.
Second.
All in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
All closed. Motion carries. And then finally, we will look to fill our secretary position. Do I hear a nomination on the floor for secretary?
Make a motion to nominate June Gagnon for secretary. Secretary.
Motion to nominate June Gagnon for secretary made by Cummings, seconded by Linda Stargus. Did I hear that correctly? Any other nominations? Hearing none, I will entertain.
Move to close nominations.
Move to, move to close nominations.
Second. Probably call her out.
Second. All right. All in favor of June Gagnon as secretary, do you say aye?
Aye.
All closed. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, so that completes item A and B on our agenda tonight. Item C, establish, establish scheduling meetings. So Kevin has provided us the full calendar, has everybody had the opportunity to tentatively review these dates, take a gamble at them, and we somewhat familiar with where these lie on the calendar, at least for the upcoming few months.
They were all pretty good, they were like, what day is Tuesday, but there was one of them, so.
I made, I made, I made a few notes, yeah, so.
So you got one on the Saturday?
So I believe it was a Sunday, actually.
Oh, it was a Sunday, yes.
It was December 10th, I believe, on the proposed schedule, that fell on a Sunday. So there's a few things that we need to consider with the, with the proposed schedule here. The first one is that before any substantial work is done on here, it's been recommended that we schedule the first public hearing. I believe that's by state statute as well, you can't get too far into this process without scheduling at least one public hearing. That would of course fall as a, I don't know if that would technically fall as a special meeting, since it's a public hearing, but I believe that could be set up for as soon as the next Monday, but I would, I would prefer to the first selectmen, if that's, if that falls. The first one is a special, and after that, if you establish, you vote on established, and after that, we go, bring it up. So Monday, the 21st of August, so next Monday, on the schedule would be when the first public hearing would be held at 6:30 PM. Any, any schedule conflicts from anybody on the commission for that day? So I, before advancing to any motions on there, I just wanted to bring everybody's attention to a few other potential conflicts while we can get ahead of the law. The Tuesday, September 12th meeting, we would be meeting, we had, our meeting would overlap with the planning and zoning. I'm not intimately familiar with everybody's board obligations or commitments, do we have anybody who sits on planning and zoning?
Aye.
Okay, so that might be one day we want to revisit during this meeting to reschedule. We also have a couple of Tuesday meetings, September 26th and October 24th, we have a conflict with the police commission. And Polly, I was familiar with you for that one, so, so we may want to consider moving those days as well, in the interest of trying to achieve full attendance, since we are a commission of only seven. Even with one, one person missing, we get pretty close to, to war.
I mean, even if you, on the night that it's police commission, if we move the meeting time up, this commission.
time up, this commission meets at six. Typically done by seven.
So seven o'clock, you might be...
Yeah, so we can keep, we can keep the same date, just don't put up a half hour.
So then... June, um, for September twelfth, um, on that Tuesday, I believe that would say, that would be the first meeting after the public hearing. I don't think we would, uh...
Go further.
I don't, I don't, I don't think we would go further than seven, but just judging by the size of the packet and the number of ideas discussed, I don't wanna, I don't wanna curtail us, I don't know if, um, and we could reasonably estimate the time of commitment there, so I think we, we're looking to the prior day.
On the way, uh, the year.
Yeah, we, we, the day before that, in the way.
Yeah, and on the way on the twelfth. Well, I don't know, coming back that day.
Would a, would a six P M?
On the twelfth.
On the twelfth? Be okay with everybody, September twelfth?
And what time is P M?
Seven.
Seven. To the best of my knowledge, they'd be meeting in the same building as we.
Same, maybe same location.
Right, so I think, I think that we would, it's a fair estimate that we'd be able to cover our business within one hour. And then, uh, obviously, the December tenth date on here falls on a Sunday. So we have board of selectmen meeting at seven P M the following Monday, December eleventh, and there is a P and Z meeting at seven P M. Wednesday looks to be wide open, although I know that that is a board of ed meeting night, I think, the second Wednesday. Um, I don't believe anybody here serves on the board of education, so I would, I would think that that is one possible consideration. That is the meeting date when we should be, um, completing our final draft. So that'll be, that'll be the meeting after the, uh, the final public hearing is called by this commission. So that'll be like, one of the final steps of our process there. Any thoughts on availability that week? I can certainly accommodate the thirteenth. How about the other end of the table?
I'm guessing that it's okay.
I know it's a little bit far, far out there on the calendar.
Right, yeah. Six thirty.
You can set your calendar and then give to the town clerk. Anything that makes changes after that, and all you're doing is changing to a special so that in case of already addressed issue, what do you mean? And we could do that from the other side, too. We scheduled this for the thirteenth, we had to change course.
Of December, yeah.
Right. Forgot to bring my crystal ball to me. I apologize. Okay, so I will, I will tend to have some listed here for December thirteenth. So...
Is the public hearing on the fifth, is that set, still? Is that a conflict with the meeting?
That would be, uh, let's see, so that is supposed to be, yes, well, we determine the time on that, I guess. Six thirty P M is the, is the time to put in there. We do have a board of zoning board of appeals at seven P M.
They don't always need to.
No.
But I have, I have a, I have a nomination on that, on the fifth floor. From six thirty to seven.
Let's see, the Monday, prior to that is, is the fourth, December fourth. There are no board or commission meetings listed on the calendar currently. Public hearing number two, um, to be penciled in for Monday, December fourth. Any objections to that? Are there any other potential, um, scheduled conflicts that we want to bring to attention at this moment?
You can move the next one, which is, was on a Sunday, who does it on the thirteenth?
Yes.
Our son's, take, take a look at the one below that then. Tuesday, twelfth, twelfth. See where it has, actually, so we get to bump that one out.
Now, that, is that in, well, is that an official meeting date, or is that more?
Action.
Action. So you guys can do that in the same night, you, did you mean?
Yeah.
Okay. So I would strike that as a potential meeting, obviously, that can be an action on the, on the thirteenth. Okay, so what I believe I'd like to do, and I will, I will look to my, uh, my veteran experience in the secretary position currently, too, and I believe that the last mission, we did not accept the full schedule on the first night. We scheduled the next meeting or two, the special meetings. We had an opportunity to type up what the new date, uh, series of dates would be, and we voted on them at the next meeting, which we would add to the agenda as part of the special meeting, and then vote on some things.
Or the marketing, to get that.
Get that information now, get a chance, get a chance to look at it, if there's any other things that are slipping our minds at the moment. So at the moment, I will, I believe we should be okay with scheduling the next two dates, which are going to be a public hearing on Monday, August twenty-first, at six thirty P M, and then a special meeting on September twelfth at six P M. Both to be located here in the Plainfield Town Hall.
Do you need a motion?
I will look for a motion to schedule those two.
I'll make a motion to schedule these two meetings, eight twenty-one and nine twelve, at six P M, six thirty on the eight twenty-one.
At six P M on?
At six P M on nine.
On twelve. Colleen, did you have a second on that?
Yes.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. For that September twelfth meeting, I will have a redrafted series of meeting dates, times, will be the same location, um, and we will vote to, we will vote on that schedule at that time. All right. Moving on to item D on the agenda, public participation. There is anybody in the audience who would like to approach the commission? Please do so at this time. Just be sure to state name and address, and just know your thoughts. Being this our first meeting, now we can consider any potential input from the commission itself at this time. Hearing none, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Second, my motion.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.